Speed so that would comply with code. The way I interpret the code as written. For the residential areas of ocean shores, there is only one. Instance where a variance can be granted to have a fence taller than six feet tall. And that instance is if the properties adjacent to each other, one has a topographical height advantage over the other. It doesn't say how much. So basically, if you have. Two pieces of property where one is higher than the other. I can grant a variance. Through, you know, code, the planning director has the ability to grant a variance for the person on the lower property. To put a fence high enough for for privacy purposes. That's really the only thing in there that I see that that gives me the ability to do that. Since. The. The the issue with the fence that was too tall that had to be cut down. I have another issue on my plate wherein there's a privacy issue between the two neighbors and the lots are flat side by side. The thing is. The the neighbor on one side's got a deck right next to the fence that gives him an elevated advantage. It's noted, it's not a topographical advantage. One property to the other. But but we do have an issue where, you know, one neighbor is watching the hot tub of the other neighbor. You know, when the guy's kids are in there and stuff and and they would like to be afforded. The right to put up a taller fence to to gain some privacy. I think it's a reasonable request, but the code doesn't allow it in that instance. And I'm curious, matter of fact, the code doesn't even tell me how much of a an elevation difference must occur. Before we get into, you know, the the area of allowing a fence to be constructed over six feet in height or not.
So you go to basically, it's on page five of our 1750 dot one twenty.
Yeah.
Which is the residential districts, plan director and city manager is going to be made through principal, the heads higher than six feet. With a required interior, sorry, our reporter. Required rear yard for the adjacent properties and application. And such extra fence height is necessary to provide. That's the only saying that's what you think is the only reason you can ever do it.
That's that's the only thing in code that gives me, you know, they give specific direction to the planning director or or a designee. That are required. And and let's clarify, this is a fence that's placed within the five foot setback. If you want to put a fence farther away from the the property line than five feet, say seven feet. Then you can build that fence to whatever height you want, and it would just require a building permit if it covered more than two hundred square feet. Or was more than ten feet in height. I think. Anything over seven feet in the building code. Requires engineering for offense. And that would apply whether it's in the side yard or. So.
So one other question that will let everybody try to get is. Do all fences require permits or not? That would be the only.
Okay, so so the other thing that that goes along with this is a fence permit is not required. Unless it's a non necessary fence, meaning it's being put on a lot that doesn't have a primary structure. A fence, a shed. I thought there was three things. But for sure, fences and sheds on a vacant lot require a non necessary structure permit. If the fence is being built. Six feet or less. And it's being built in conjunction with the house, then it doesn't require a permit. If the fence is over. Six feet, so that the sequence of permitting is if it's if they're proposing a fence over six feet, whether it's a non necessary or accessory fence. Then it requires planning department approval. If it's a. Non necessary fence, then it requires an accessory permit. If it's on a on a lot with a primary structure. And it's over seven feet, then it requires approval from planning because it's over six and it also requires a building permit because it's over seven. Seven feet and under do not require a building permit. On a on a lot with a primary structure. I I talked way too much there, I'm sorry. I mean. Do you guys have it clear in your head what situations ramp up to requiring?
So six foot is no problem.
Six foot's no problem.
Seven foot. No problem if you.
It's required that planning approve. A seven foot fence.
But it does not require a building permit.
It doesn't unless it's on a vacant lot, then it requires it's not necessarily a building permit, but a non necessary structure permit.
Okay, and then I'm sorry, if I need, if I need, if I. Feel the need for privacy, then I can come to you for an exception to build a taller fence. If there's topographical issues.
That's that's my interpretation of the code is right.
Thank you.
Would someone need some type of variance or permit to, let's say, if I didn't plant some Leyland cypress. Couple years later, it's, you know.
So the way I read. Yeah, that that's why I brought this to you guys' attention. We we seem to have a. You know, maybe some unintended consequences of, you know, we're promoting vegetative plantings. But we wanted to prune them to six feet when they start getting to that height, you know, so yes, that is a conflict. With what we've got going on in town now.
Is that becoming an issue that you don't yet? Has anybody explained?
I haven't had a problem with with vegetation being over sixty. One of the guys that came to me asking for a more than six foot tall fence said, well, can I put a shelf at the top of the fence and puts put some plants along there? But but the code says. Fences or vegetation. Trees. You know, so I can't even give him a a good faith answer there other than the code says no.
So do we need? Do we need vegetation in there? Can we just strike the word vegetation from from the code?
Well, that would be up to you guys. I I don't know how far out this discussion needs to go or how much input needs to be had, but we're seeing a lot of fences and a lot of vegetation going in. If there's a problem with how the code's written today, I would like to get ahead of it.
Okay, go ahead.
But I like vegetation being in there. Now, maybe the six feet is an issue. But without that, I mean, you just have, again, the yards running and. So when it's used for screening, right? And that's what it says specifically when used for screening. Right? So if somebody's planting something and the next thing you know, you got a twenty foot hedge sitting there.
If it's a single tree at twenty feet, is that is that reasonable and it's an issue?
Because that's not screening, that's not screening, but I think. How I interpret the code is is it says. In all districts, no fence wall or vegetation when used for screening, right?
Okay.
So it's being used for privacy, right? So maybe for vegetation, it shouldn't be six feet, maybe it could be more than that, but I think to. Let's take it out. Again, I think we're asking for things to run and I think we've got a lot of acres that way I've read it. Where you see all these, the all the murals that are screened and they're twenty feet tall, thirty feet tall, it's fine.
Yeah, sure. The screening. The intentional screenings are Leyland cypress. I don't see much arbor wider over here. They'll live here or not, but.
There there are a few hedges around that are being used for screening.
Of what? There's some other workers ahead.
I I believe in Cypress. I know, yeah, I know one of my dad installed on Mount Olympus like. Fifteen, twenty years ago, and that makes huge.
Yeah, you're you're right.
That's probably the only species that I think I want to destroy.
I've got some Nellie Stevens, I'm trying to grow them, also some future green giants.
But so I mean, there are other options.
I mean, that's a that's that's part of the discussion.
I mean, I don't, I mean, it's just, we just definitely need to talk about it and then figure it out. And then you bring in the third issue, which is a really interesting issue, and every deck in this town is. At least. Twelve to sixteen inches at the minimum above height. And when you brought it so small, you've got a side deck or. Or rear deck, you have already have a two point height advantage typically. So you're basically, you know, your line of sight now is that much higher.
Yeah, I. You know, and and maybe I'm being too literal in the interpretation of the code, but when they talk about. Even the example, you know, where where I went out and looked at this. Where a guy is requesting a fence eight feet to shield from the neighbors. If I put up an eight foot fence along that full property line, there's still second story windows all over the neighborhood that could see his hot tub. You know, it it's somewhat of a civil matter in that, you know, if I had some guy peeping over the fence to my daughter, I would. Go have a chat with the fellow. You know. But. But, you know, rightfully so, they're trying to maintain an amicable. Relationship and he feels like a fence would be the most amicable way to resolve his issue. But he's having trouble with the code allowing that. Do we want to? And I I I don't know that I necessarily want the responsibility, maybe. Maybe allow instances other than elevation, you know, request to go through a hearing exam or something like that for a variance. Rather than have it be arbitrarily.
My other question, why is this you and not the building department?
Uh fences?
Yeah. I'm just curious.
It's entitled seventeen, I don't know, and and it's specifically calling out the planning department. Yeah, and and I can tell you that in the past. There's been interpretation of the code because they refer to a fence as a structure. And and so structures are not allowed in the twenty five foot setbacks along property and stuff like that, but in the very first part of. The accessory structure codes. They they talk about accessory structures and then they accept fences. So at that point. I'm making the interpretation, the interpretation that fences are allowed in the setbacks. It was not intended to keep fences out of the setbacks. It doesn't even pass the common sense test. So and and the shoreline master program specifically allows fences in the setbacks all the way down to the vegetated buffer. Or the edge of the property, whichever is farthest from the water. So. That's kind of where I'm at with this issue. I don't have a specific direction that I would like to go. I'm I'm just bringing it to the planning commission. I I can, I can say no and. And I've been, you know, threatened with lawsuit, you know, that the city would be sued. If I do. So I'm wondering if this is something that, you know, we want to bring to the mayor's attention and and let him entertain us revising this particular code or. If you guys feel that it's sufficient in its nature, like, you know, like I said, I think the intent of the original development was to. Limit fences to six feet. Driving down Point Brown and Ocean Shores Boulevard now, I'm seeing a lot of, you know, like I, like I said in our last meeting, it's starting to look like an ice cube tray forming up. You know, where people are trying to box themselves in, they want their view of the canal and everything else hidden. So. I I get that, I guess. But.
There's a lot of stuff. It's. You know, it's just back to the. Driving down Point Brown and pushing towards Boulevard now, I'm seeing a lot of, you know, like I, like I said in our last meeting, it's starting to look like an ice cube tray forming up. You know, where people are trying to box themselves in, they want their view of the canal and everything else hidden. So. I I get that, I guess. But. There's a lot of stuff. It's. You know, it's just back to the. I think it's something for us to discuss. What would you have? I mean, the elevation, you have some latency because all this says that there is a grade advantage of what property we're about.
Yeah.
What other instances would we look at? There isn't a great advantage. Do you say it's? The person. Do you get into the issue of arbitrating the person that feels they have a need for enhanced privacy?
That's what I'm wondering. Do I want to be put in that position? Not really, because this wasn't an issue until there was a change in hands on the property. The neighbor that was there before was fine. There's been a change in ownership and now it's an issue. So another change in ownership could make the issue go away again, and now we're left with an eight foot fence that.
Or the opposite is like you said, which isn't a bad option, is allow it to go to the hearing exam. Request a variance.
So.
If somebody feels that's. Impatient about it.
Okay, currently variances are are fifteen hundred dollars and they require a public hearing.
Variance of primary solution or is that? Or something else?
Well, variances are are to afford relief from the strict interpretation of the code as written dimensionally. And and this includes height dimensions that would. Serve to maybe limit the amount of privacy that a person could be afforded.
Can I ask you a question about the situation? How how close is this?
No, this is internal. Yeah, this. You can email me your questions to the planning department. Yeah. We're too dressed it that way.
I just. I don't know where we go with this, but look at this here. Anybody has any idea where we go with it?
Are we stating that there's a problem with the verbiage of the code in relation to? Higher elevation and. And. In order to obtain privacy, are we are we stating that there's there's a problem with the verbiage that's that somebody is going to find a legal leg to stand on to say, hey? Ocean Shore should let me build a bigger fence here because this guy is looking down at my hot tub.
No, I I think the language is fairly clear. I'm not having a problem interpreting it or feeling like there's a lot of wiggle room there.
You know, and and the common sense approach to this is if there's a two foot variance, then you can put an eight foot. It's you're not going to say there's a two foot variance and they're going to let you put a twelve foot fence and common sense wise, right?
So if there. That's the other thing is we don't have any dimensional requirements.
Right, but I mean, this at some point you get the common sense.
Yeah, if.
Our definition of privacy is sixty. Really, when you read the code.
That's it there. That's probably a fair assessment.
That's what I would say. The current code says a privacy fence. Is a six foot fence. But any. Deviation from that, what I would say would right now easily you could account for, you know, because I'm too deep below the side. If I could do, I don't have to, I built first. If you do an eight foot fence, I could have. But I didn't. I did a five and a half foot, so.
But I do agree that we need to have further discussion. So what I would recommend is. We've had a discussion here. We're not sure exactly. How we go forward with it. Is. Able to tell the next meeting. If possible, and give us some a chance to think about what what makes sense. I mean, as written. I mean, it makes sense. You can always come request a variance. Yeah, but there's always going to be circumstances that people. Feel that their privacy. Is. Is is being encroached upon, right? That maybe we need to look at how to handle those. I believe one off. Rather than. Across the board situation.
Yeah, and who should have that authority? That's the question. I don't. I don't want to put that in your hands or the building official's hands. I I really don't. Just just when somebody's saying, I want to put a hot tub in, I want to put a twenty foot fence on my hot tub. Yeah, I agree. I don't.
Well, so so the one of the. One of the resolutions that I discussed with the owner on this thing is this code that we're talking about applies to fences on the property line. He could put a twelve foot barrier around his his hot tubs. And well, you know, and and that we we had that discussion and then we get into, you know, things like, well, it's not aesthetically. You know. Pleasing to my wife to have a big barrier in the backyard, you know, I mean, there. There there's an argument to be made that that I don't like the way that looks. It would be easier to put the barrier at the edge of the property as opposed to. A barrier at the edge and then a tall taller barrier inside. I mean, that's a workaround. If the privacy is that important. Then. You know, then you have to exercise all options.
You basically do anything outside of. The five foot setback.
Once you get outside of the five foot setback, you can build taller fences, arbors, you know, things of that nature.
It's just all the inside that five foot setback where this.
We're just, I'm most concerned with the five foot setback. Being within that.
I I agree.
I I I have also gotten information that other jurisdictions handle fences differently or whatever, but I haven't taken the time. To to look at other jurisdictions, regulation or patents, so. That might might be worth, you know, spending a little bit to to take a look at that and see what other what avenue you open. You know.
That's your question. Just one more reason why the problem.
Well, I I just got out of a really heated code enforcement action over a fence and. And I was being threatened because the fence was too high and now I'm being threatened because the fence isn't high enough, so.
It was it was very nasty at the. Meeting I've been over fences. There were a couple of comments on fences. So it's.
I missed that.
No, it's becoming more and more of an issue. It seems to be the last month that we've gone on. I don't know why. Because defenses make good neighbors. They do. Or you can do what we do, and we just have. Doubts in all of our fences, you know, by my own, want to look, look.
One of the things I'll throw out there for the sake of discussion is. They were allowing, and 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 this is one of those things that I kind of clamped down on in the last couple of weeks because. Fences were not making it to the planning department for any decisions at all. They were being approved outside of my jurisdiction. And and then the enforcement would end up in my lap when it got to be an issue. So now I've I've got it to where all fences that are going to be constructed over six feet come to planning for approval and somebody's going to take a beating. I want it to be because. I made the decision. So we rectified that.
But okay.
Okay, so so one of the things that's been going on is we've been building. Six foot fences and then putting another two feet of lattice on top.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, so so to me, that's an eight foot fence. It's a structure. It's a single structure. Top to bottom, eight feet in height, and so I I will not be permitting those unless there's a. Need based on elevation differences between the properties. I can't see any difference between. A a six foot cedar fence with two feet of lattice on top and an eight foot chain link fence that's open. I mean. They're one and same.
Does the chain link fence require, is considered screen chain link?
It's a fence.
Yep, sort of names of.
Or yeah, I would I would apply this code to, you know, fabric, wire fabric fencing as well.
For all those really tall fences along the, of course, I'll probably grant father those. Twenty foot high protecting houses.
You know what? I. That's that's the common sense to me says, yeah, those are legitimate reasons to have one, but I don't have anything in code that says I can apply my common sense to those type of situations.
All right, well, let's do this. We'll talk about this more. Hopefully, I get to see the mayor the next two weeks and have a quick discussion on the feeling of where we're going with this.
Okay.
And I'm really at a loss as to what the answer is. Personally, so we need to work this a lot.
I appreciate you guys, you know, taking it under consideration and and thinking about it with me because I'm I'm kind of at a loss too, so.
All right.
I mean, I know what the code says and I can enforce that easy enough, but it's not making friends.
Yeah, so it's, it is always with all of this. Arnold Rose is a six foot required, the big big fencing company, so it's.
Yeah.
At the Lockfaring Guys.
Yep.
The man, the guy that built eighty five percent of the fences in this town, he knows.
Yeah.
When somebody wants an eight foot fence, he doesn't inform them unless you do this, right?
We've already, we've already talked about that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think that probably eighty five percent of the fences.
Yeah, there's a couple of other fence owners that. That.
Not as many as him.
Yeah.
But I've seen a few other people. That's always the answer, okay?
Thank you.
All right, next item. Dan and I had some conversation. Dan couldn't be here. We promised to look at. Seventeen fifty two ten architectural features, which page seven of the agenda. And this comes to the famous. Table in subsection D. On minimum square footage is by division. Which is always in discussion as to what's. What's reasonable and what isn't reasonable. And then also paragraph E also is. Always been an issue. This is some homes that are getting. Built larger. So again, this is just general discussion. This will be back next week again, because we have new people in here that haven't been around this. That wasn't around on this. And of course, I'm going to put Marshall on it again. Have you had people come in? Asking for variance on minimum square footages at all?
The the question always comes up, but I usually just read straight to the table, you know, what they're required to build as minimum square footages within the R districts. Because the table doesn't apply to.
R two R three.
Multi family.
R two above doesn't require it.
Yeah.
And I don't know, if all the we are the billing department, if we get into this, the paragraph E gets more and more confusing. That basically. If you have. A two story dwelling. And you're on waterfront lot in those divisions, your first floor has to be a thousand square feet at least, so you have to. And. Yeah, I'm sure there's something here.
Does it say the bottom floor or the living floor?
Says.
The main floor.
Main floor. Which is always going to interpretation as to what the main floor is.
Exactly.
Many people would say that's ground floor. And I mean, you could intern houses.
Yeah, I've got several houses in town that the floor that everybody spends their time on, it's got the living room, the kitchen and the viewing room. You know, whether it's on the B side or the ocean side is the second floor.
Okay. Yeah, I see that.
And we're starting to see these carriage houses being built wherein I would see the main floor as the the second.
Yeah, I mean, there's no no argument in all of that.
Okay.
So. The background on this, I've been talking to folks, is is the. The worry that.
When somebody wants an eight foot fence, he doesn't inform them, unless you do this, right?
We've already, we've already talked about that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think that probably eighty-five percent of the fenders.
Yeah, there's a couple of other fence owners that, um. That.
Not as many as.
Yeah.
But I've seen a few other people, okay. That's always the answer, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, next item. Um, Dan and I had some conversation, Dan couldn't be here. We promised to look at. Seventeen fifty-two ten architectural features, which page seven of the agenda. And this comes to the famous. Table in subsection D. Uh, on minimum square footage is by division. Which is always in discussion as to what's. Uh, what's reasonable and what isn't reasonable. Um. And then also paragraph E also is. Always been an issue. This is some homes that are getting. Built larger. So again, this is just general discussion. This will be back next week again, uh, cause we have new people in here that haven't been around this. That, uh, wasn't around on this. And of course, I'm gonna put Marshall on it again. Have you had people come in? Asking for variance on minimum square footages at all?
Um, the, the question always comes up, but I usually just read straight to the table, you know, what they're required to build as minimum square footages within the R districts. Um. Because the table doesn't apply to, um.
Our tour.
Multi-family.
Our tour above doesn't require it.
Yeah.
And I don't know, if all the, we are the billing department, if we get into this, the paragraph E gets more and more confusing. Um. That basically. If you have. A two-story dwelling. And you're on waterfront lot in those divisions, your first floor has to be a thousand square feet at least, so you have to. And. Yeah, I'm sure.
Does it say the bottom floor or the living floor?
Says. Main floor.
The main floor.
Main floor. Which is always going to interpretation as to what the main floor is.
Exactly.
Many people would say that's ground floor. And, but, I mean, you can interpret houses.
Yeah, I've got several houses in town that, um, the floor that everybody spends their time on, it's got the living room, the kitchen and the viewing room. Um, you know, whether it's on the bay side or the ocean side is the second floor.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
And we're starting to see, um, these carriage houses being built, um, wherein I would see the main floor as the, the second.
Yeah, I see that. Yeah, I mean, there's no, no argument in all of that.
Okay.
So. The background on this, having talked to folks is, is the. The worry that if we got rid of this table, we'd start having tiny houses. In the area, um. Firstly, I don't know, tiny house by definition is less than four hundred square feet. Which is by most common definitions of a tiny home is four hundred square feet. Uh. So I mean, Thor, you brought this up. Is, is there a reasonable number? Do we need? A number?
Never found another jurisdiction that had a minimum square footage table in one. They, they go by the building code.
Yeah.
I think, I think a thousand square foot, I, I, I think paragraph B in particular honors. That's what it says in the text, uh. The minimum square footage on waterfront lots of eight hundred square feet. It's, it's not exclusive only to. Thousand square foot minimum table.
Yeah. I mean. One option to keep. The tradition, I don't want. Keep the. Feeling that we're not gonna have. You know, two nice homes that have been here thirty years and someone's gonna put a tiny hole in between them, which some people find objectionable, is maybe we keep a minimum square footage. Um. But, you know, something less than, wow, an eight hundred. And just make it a crosswalk thing, cause you gotta, you have to know which division you're in. This isn't simple. You know, back in the day when ocean showing was. Being developed, everybody knew which division they were in, and now I have no, I have no idea what division I'm in.
It doesn't even make any sense. I mean, you could have two houses next door to each other that are following different requirements.
Wait, thoughts on that? Is, is, is there a, a thought that a single number would be better?
I, I, I agree that it would be better. I look at this and I think, why? Sure. That's my first question.
Why I think it's, I think it's left, never made it, never been explained either, but.
I mean, and the intent is to not have. Tiny homes, basically.
Well, yeah, that's what they meant, because this is. Sixty years ago.
Yeah, but the intent of keeping it now, the argument of not getting rid of it. The minimum square footage.
Okay, what's on the tenant? I mean, the cost of buying, well, the cost of buying that waterfront lot is a thousand or more. You know, I think that that's gonna, you know, that's gonna include somebody who can come in and put, you know, a tiny hole on that lot anyway. So I'm of the opinion as well that. A standardized number, whatever that number is, would, would benefit community. It doesn't have to be. Like Seattle doing four hundred and fifty square foot, uh, small homes. Uh, it doesn't have to be a thousand, but, uh, some number that we're comfortable with. That, that works for the community. There are some that are small, some that are, you know, six hundred square feet and some that are. You know. Much larger, uh, so is there a, a right number? Cause I agree, this chart. Was, was done in, in, in a long, in a long time ago.
Alright, well, there's a, there's a minimum square footage or a size in the manufactured home section of the code. That, um. I don't know if it's six fifty or eight fifty or whatever, but that might be a good place to refer to as a starting point because manufactured homes are allowed. Within the entire community.
I think it's double wide.
Yeah, but it, yeah, and they, well, it's, it's not just division twenty-four, it's in the manufacturer, um, it's in the manufacturer home regulations.
Division twenty-four is. Rich tree, no?
Yeah, that's the division forum, but if you wanna put a, a manufactured home out in division.
There are every.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
There's a minimum size that you can put and, and that might, yeah, it's defined in code.
And it, and it doesn't have to meet.
Sorry, I can't quote it, huh?
And it doesn't have to meet this.
I think it does meet the minimum of that table.
Um, so what that means is that if you wanted to put. A manufacturer, you'd have to find a thousand square foot manufacturing home, if you wanna put a waterfront. In one of those divisions.
Yeah, I'll. Would make a note to look at that because I don't wanna create a.
Yeah, that's, Marshall, that's great. If that's there. That would be a great start for discussing of a minimum square foot. Throughout the community, because they are. Scattered throughout our community.
I wanna say it's twenty-four by something. Two twelve foot sections by either twenty-eight feet long or something like that, or. I, I, yeah, I think it's.
The manufacturing homes are.
It's specific to manufacturer, the placement of manufactured rooms.
The other issue to talk about now, now is. Multi-story homes. Because we. To start thinking about, um. Let's say we pick the number. Eight hundred. Um. If somebody wanted to put that eight hundred square, wanna do a two-story home. Does it need to be eight hundred in the main living area, or could you say something like eighty percent of this? Must be in the main living area. I mean, that's, it's about.
I'm just gonna throw a real stop sign. If we. Trying to justify a number somehow.
Yeah.
And yet we never justified the original number. I'm wondering if we get into trouble. But having a, a dichotomy, so to speak, and. Justifying a new number, whatever it is. Relative to the old one, especially with two-story homes. Or do we say that it has to be thus and so? If we don't have a rationale for it reasonably, how would we have a rationale for it now? Or do we get channels of rationalization?
I, I, I do think saying there is no minimum square footage. Would be a real problem with the current environment. There would be a lot of. Pushback to eliminate minimum square footage.
All the others. So we just looked up the code and that was eight hundred and sixty-four is two twelve by thirty-six?
Uh, thirty-six.
Two halves, not less than twelve by thirty-six, so that's a eight hundred and sixty-four square foot.
But.
So. Um. That's for a manufactured home placed, um, placed in an area.
So you can put a manufactured home everywhere but. Waterfront on those tiny divisions.
Well, you would have to purchase a larger. Yeah, well, you can go triple wide.
Yeah.
And I, I think I've seen a couple of those, so that's. That's a number.
And Thor, I totally hear you. I'm just trying to get the realities of what pushback will be happening. There's no, I think the reality is gonna be based upon. Misunderstood. Things like relative value and so, but if we're gonna change anything. Probably the shortest, the quickest path to do it would be to eliminate E and say eight hundred square feet or something like that.
That's kind of where I'm going. Do you want? You didn't get into, before I got here, getting architectural feature. Do you wanna have some sort of definition of? Um. Minimum square footage of upper stories since they're percentage of the main building. Well, we're gonna leave, we're gonna continue some of these. The twenty by twenty silos that are three stories tall and see the ocean. Yeah, that's fine. There's generally everything that's coming to me. Is there outside of those? You know, talk about the view silos.
Well, we're gonna find out. The whole country is finding out that housing is in a shortage. And will be for the rest of our lives. There are no solutions out there to increase affordable housing that make the slightest bit of sense at all. And so to the extent that we can cut down those maximum, or minimum required. We'll at least be able to do that. We don't have to build tiny houses to do it. But if you know that Seattle really built by tiny houses, they didn't get any cheaper. You know that. You have to cut the demand for housing.
And we still haven't gone back to looking at subdivision of. Uh, multifamily lots and all that sort of stuff, and just smaller and doing difference on that and getting rid of the requirement for the common wall subdivision, that's. Now, when Marshall has time to read and him and I can go through every bit of the code. Figure out what's wiring this. Commonwealth subdivision thing. I, I know, Archie told me, but it takes a lot.
I, I think it's, um, I, I think it's one of those things where we need to, to watch this trend that right now is at the very beginning. Um, we've got one or two of those on the market today that, um.
Those are tiny homes that are common wall subdivision. Those are. How many square feet?
They're small.
The marine view ones?
Yeah.
Six hundred.
No.
Combined, they're, they're. Three hundred and eighty or three ninety a piece or something.
Yeah, that, I mean, they're a hundred, four hundred.
So, so they're, so the concept, um. Is really fresh on the market. We don't know if this is gonna be a flash in the pan, they're not gonna sell, and they'll go back to some other type of housing development, or whether they're gonna. You know, once they get. Once people notice that they're there and available, are they gonna sell like hotcakes and there will be a trend to continue this process or? You know, we just, I, I don't think we know yet.
They have, and they're sorry, we've only been there like a couple of months. They haven't really attracted a lot of interest, unfortunately.
Yeah, there's a lot of people looking at them, but I don't know that they've had any sales yet, and I don't know that they, the, the, the one developer that I had conversations with. Is just now starting to ramp up with some marketing.
And. I think when you go inside those and see how small they really are, that's gonna.
They're moving to a studio, basically.
Basically, it's a studio apartment. We did a couple of five hundred and sixty-four square foot cabins on review drives some years ago, and they had a full bedroom, full bath, full shower, full kitchen. And that's about as small as I noticed they could actually get. Those, those are con, you might want, those four, I was thinking, yeah. Five, five foot two story. Now, how small are those four? Where does he get on a review on the neighborhood size, twenty-eight? Or five sixty-four, and they were sixteen feet wide and. Thirty-five feet long or something. Those are all sold, though. Those aren't sold years ago. And they're not rentals, they're, they're rentals, yeah. They are rentals, but.
Grounded rentals.
Okay. And at that time, they were sold as whatever you wanted, really. One has an APHA law on them, I think. But. I think. All things considered, most people who buy something don't wanna live. With a common wall apartment, condo, whatever. They only do that because it's the most affordable option. And for a second home, I don't think people are that tight between a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand bucks each way. So I have some concern about what are these common wall things we're in, they're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, try to.
It's a separate issue of this. I think we need to solve this common wall. Problem, I'm gonna call it, and that's. I like the eight hundred square foot as a start. Of the discussion, right? I think that works well throughout the community. That's a, a good size. Um. If we wanna amend this chart. Or do away with the chart.
Most people want, what, what they're buying here, two bedroom houses with two bathrooms. You can't do that eight hundred square.
So that'd be a minimum, right?
Those are all eleven, those are running, most of them are running eleven hundred.
Eleven to twelve, everybody, that's what's getting built everywhere right now.
A lot of people are buying, they're not, they don't wanna work better place. Unless it's a steel or something like that, or on the water or. You know, you know, it just don't feel a lot of interest, anything smaller than that. Yeah, it's not practical for a vacation family. I mean, it's. And then the other issue is, do we wanna have a discussion about multi-story? Is that, is that eight hundred feet? Footprint, or is that? Eight hundred feet tall? So just think about how we would do that.
Same problem here with the thousand. That's what's better to model, but I, I just eliminate E, it doesn't. It makes design difficult for one thing. Cause you gotta hit sixteen hundred square feet then. To make anything worthwhile.
And it becomes confusing when you're.
Anyway, it's all a big problem, I can. I always like to see what, what problem are we trying to solve here? We can't enumerate that.
Well, this was, uh, you know where this came from. This was.
Oh, yeah, between seventy-one.
Yes, nine seventy-one, and that's. Just carried in, and it's only stayed in there for the fear of tiny homes in the last ten years. Is why it's, it had to come.
Alright.
So I'm perfectly willing to. Have a discussion with the mayor on this as well. Um, the last thing is, before we start off the blue zone, apparently the city's doing a, own blue zone thing with. Grace Harbor County, did you know that? Is Grace Harbor County paying for blue zone board to come out, or?
Uh, Summit Pacific partnered with Blue Zones, and so we have a gentleman named Chris Bry. That is working with us on our community outreach group.
So Grace Harbor paid.
Summit Pacific partnered.
Paid for the, they didn't part of it, they paid. This is the big difference. I know, that's the blue zone term. So I don't know who's up first, and we have, you know, we have both Mark and Kerry sort of do some sort of education for us. As to what blue zones mean, and then we're gonna have a discussion about where we might fit into this, cause I know this is something. The mayor's interested in, it's a, it's a great program. Uh, my research on it is the problem is it's for profit, and it's not cheap. Do you wanna?
Sir, sir, um, yeah, you're right, it is not cheap. And I don't know how sustainable it is with that over time, but just to give you guys a little bit of insight into what the blue zone. Goals and projects are, i- i- it's really to improve the overall well-being in a community. Whether that be through physical health, mental health, lowering obesity rates, smoking awareness and, and stopping, um. I guess there's a lot that communities have been doing, but to your research. Over time, it becomes really expensive to actually monitor and measure those. To see, are we meeting our objectives and goals? So. I think for us in Ocean Shores. Kind of looking at the spirit of blue zone. Might. Might suit us better without having to make a, a huge investment, but if, if Summit Pacific is doing it, maybe we should take it back on that. I was not aware of that. Um. Adding healthy foods, working with grocery stores to provide more healthy food options. Um, going more plant-based foods and having more plant-based food options available are. Always one thing that we could encourage anyway, um. I, I, I think that we can do things like walking trails, biking trails, walking buddies at school. I know one, one area that. Had initiated walking buddies and that's free. So it's basically an adult. Volunteers to go and walk with kids, so they're getting a mile of walking in. In a day, and, and really starting that kind of physical fitness awareness at the elementary level, which could be actually kind of fun, I think. Um. But that, that's kind of. The takeaway that I got with it is there's a lot of things that are kind of common sense. To actually go through the program, you have to have trainers, you have to be certified. You have to, it has to be monitored, measured and reported on on a very regular basis to make sure that you are in fact. Meeting the goals of what you say you're meeting in order to get the benefits to the community, to say you are a certified blue zone community. Um, and, and maybe that's how we wanna go as a community, I don't know, but it, it is. Expensive.
Really.
Over time.
Millions.
Exactly.
Your assessment is, your assessment's not expensive.
And, and, and most of them give up on it after a while, and what I can equate that to is. In my career, I worked a lot of manufacturing, and I have a Malcolm Ball Bridge Award that came out years and years ago, right? And so it was. Continuous quality commitment, right, is what all these companies had, and believe me, I know our company in fact spent millions doing it, and. Out of the gate, you can get a lot of return because there's the big things that you know you're gonna swallow and do. And after that, your incremental returns actually become diminishing returns. As far as what you say you've really achieved, because if you achieve a ten percent improvement on whatever. And how you achieve another ten percent and another, it, it just becomes diminishing returns after a while. And actually to capture the data, we were lucky in that we had systems and processes to do that. But to really get that data, to encourage businesses or to put in our own systems to capture it, it, it becomes really expensive to do.
It'd be very interesting to see where someone's.
It, it will be.
Mark, go ahead on.
Yeah. Um, so I had a question, um, there was a trend. Maybe two or three years ago that this community was like hot on fire for pickleball, and it seemed like every adult. Uh, senior in Ocean Shores was involved in some sort of a pickleball event, um, in their neighborhoods, cause we've got several courts around town. Does that still exist?
It does.
It does.
It, it, it does, and it's very active and it's growing, and since that has occurred, it's now the state sport. Pickleball is now signed by the governor as the state sport of Washington, so.
And the, and the Washington state champion in the sixty to sixty-five year group was. So, they're hard to beat pickleball players.
Yeah.
And the community club group.
That's what I'm wondering, that the community club fits well into this blue zone.
And that's the angle that I took with mine, I'm sorry.
I was done, and I'm glad, I've tried to do it.
So, so I took the angle of, um. The shut-ins, the mayor's been talking about, how do we reach the shut-ins? In Ocean Shores, and so, yeah, the community club offers a lot. Uh, pickleball is one of those, uh, very active groups. But the blue zone cons, the concept, I thought was very interesting. There's five cities around the world. That they've identified as people live to be a hundred years old, and there's nine concepts that are. Um. The same in all of those, uh, areas, which is very awesome, uh, move naturally, the eighty percent rule, what's the purpose? Wake up with a purpose every day. Uh, plant slant, more vegetables, uh, healthier. Surround yourself with the right track, right people. Uh, everybody I've talked to really likes the next one. It's the wine at five. Yeah, um. Make sure your loved ones come first, uh, down ship. You know, relax. And find somewhere to belong. So if you think about that. And find somewhere to belong. So if you think about that, we've pretty active groups here in Ocean Shores. But not maybe active enough, and it may not be. Meeting everyone's needs. So the community club is a member-based, you gotta. You gotta belong. Otherwise, if I, as a member, I take a guest who's not a member, it's a dog. So there's a cost associated with taking guests to the community club. But. What I was thinking here. We could get a lot of agencies involved, the VFW, the Alps, the Lions, the Eagles, they all have activities. But the question becomes. If you take someone that you know, just think about someone who never gets out. Well, what are they interested in? So the tough part is reaching those folks. And finding out what are their interests, and then matching them. To some event that they're interested in at one of these agencies that are already providing. The service that they're looking for. So we need to find out where these folks are. What they're interested in, and then match them up to the activities they're interested in. So. How do we do that? Well. Uh, my recommendations. I look at Facebook every morning, my Brad and I, we we look at that. And I've noticed some really great things when the mayor posts stuff. He gets great comments for, thanks for communicating, et cetera. So I thought that if the mayor would outline. On Facebook, this plan that he's got. Now, I know there's two committees looking. He's already appointed two committees, and I don't know what they're doing yet. Um, I haven't gotten any reports back from that. But if he would just put that out on Facebook, a lot of the shut-ins are looking at Facebook. And so we would reach some of those people uh, that way. Um. And then. Create a community outreach page. Whether on Facebook or the city website or whatever, to try to reach people in that merit. Find out what they'd want and match them with what's going on. And then the other day, I'm thinking, you know, all these agencies that I've just mentioned and others, all churches. They all have calendars of events. If we could contact those folks and put together a community calendar. That we could consolidate and post so that people could see what's going on. And we could have some volunteers who wouldn't mind taking these folks who might not want to get out. Cause they don't know anybody, or they just don't feel like they wanna go by themselves. Uh, a community calendar might help get some of these people out and more involved. We could post it on the city website, maybe, um, or Facebook. And I also had a thought, hey, we all get utility bills. We could put the consolidated, perhaps, now I might be naive here, but we could put the consolidated community calendar. In with our utility bill. Everybody gets it, whether you're out of pay or not, and it would go to every resident in Ocean Shores. So these are some of the ways that I'm I'm thinking that we can reach the folks that aren't active. To meet some of these goals in the blue zone project.
Things definitely, you're talking to the mayor. Committees you took on with us yet?
Yeah, I wanna. The community outreach. Committee.
Is, isn't there two or two committees, or is there just one?
And we're doing all of that. So we have a first phase and a second phase, and we are meeting, we're supposed to meet Friday to complete the birthday, so. Second phase will be, um, like we just got all the list of all the different people, and. Now it'll be collaborating, and there's churches involved, there's cap office, um. The Wheels on Wheels people, everybody, and they're working on putting a calendar together. I actually just got an email from them while we were sitting here about that.
Yeah, I do have a commitment from them. I don't know if they've shared it with you. They are willing to um. Post free in the Ocean Observer, anything.
You must be the reason, that's the email that I just got.
I went through the board.
Yeah.
With the discussion, um, and they committed to that.
Yeah, and and the community club board needs things to do too. Sometimes they do.
Yeah.
Just to get them out of the same thing every day they're doing all the time, so it's good to. Move them out. That's all good, and you know, then we get into what is the. I mean, a lot's gonna come back, what's coming with Summit Pacific. Of the survey, then we're gonna say, what is? Our role in this as the planning commission? Obviously, we've been asked, and we will, I'm gonna start it probably not next week, the week after, we're gonna start talking biking and walking. What has to be done? That's obviously part of it. Well, that's. Downtown Corr biking and walking, cause that's gonna go its own route. We're gonna talk, fight me walking outside downtown Corr, cause I don't wanna. Get into that discussion, it's not worth it, um. One of the thoughts that, well, I'll talk to you and the mayor about it, is really. With biking and walking, I'm really spinning this towards being an ad hoc of. The planning commission and then getting public involvement into it. And I allow, have an ad hoc, and I'm allowed, we're allowed to do, we've never had an ad hoc in the planning commission, but we will allow. I think it's up to three members, I'll read the the notes again. But then we just wanna do a. A separate meeting of the ad hoc committee and invite the public and just start whiteboarding all of that, um, biking and and. Biking and, you know, I call it safe cycling and walking is anything we wanna call it. Um, that's definitely a component. Um, when you look at walkability scores. For Ocean Shores, they're like zero. Anywhere you look, it's just not true because it's fairly walkable, otherwise you know where to walk. Uh, so we'll talk. Get them all done, and so then we're gonna have to get city staff involved. Does sign of just being limits, it's a combination of NECKI and DPW together, right?
The speed limit signs are the police department.
Right.
The rest of the signs are John Wayne.
Yeah, I mean, but as far as deciding where I'm raising, lowering speed limits, all that sort of stuff.
And her.
She have to apply the dangerous speed limit, or to add. But we can also add things like pedestrian signs without. We can, we could paint bikes on the streets for safe cycling, we could, we're about. With one or some without anybody get killed, or seriously injured on a yellow bike would be a good thing.
And I think that the, it's like. Blue zones is like the overall big huge concept, but the small part is, is that if we can establish certain things, we can go after grants for certain things. Kind of like the safe routes in school or that kind of thing, like if we're establishing things and becoming a walkable city. We can apply for grants to like finish the path. You know, those are the things that they're.
And there's pieces of it, but it's also pulling it all together. I mean, because this. Uh, would also get finished if we ever did the north end of the canal project. So that would do the last half mile as well, so it's it's pulling it all together. And then the other thing is, it's not in our family work, but we'll figure out how to do it. It's come up at several. Um, city council meetings is a sense of community. So doing a midweek. Food truck. Concert in the convention center parking lot that is really directed towards residents. I mean, night out is a great start. I know you got pulled into that, but a similar night out type thing. The people are all going, I go up to see work to see the process, and I think that's pretty cool. So could we figure out a way? In the budget next year to put some once a month city concerts. Now that we have food trucks, it's a food traction event, and sort of driving that as a sense of community.
Not with the fundraising, I just fundraised all that money to do national night out.
I know, but it was no city money.
So, I mean, it's doable even.
Yeah.
Without it.
The uh, the owner of the complex around the IGA is looking at at trying to create exactly what you're talking about. Is an area where community can come together, not necessarily. You know, to to attract tourists, but give the community a place to come and. Socialize.
She tried, she hadn't figured out what to do with the old ACF, but she.
Yeah.
She's getting bids on commercial kitchen already.
Yeah. So that's something that, and and I've been. Potentially a roadblock in that, because we've been working on trying to figure out how to get a food truck into Ocean Shores. In the past year, and I think we crossed that hurdle. We figured it out, and so, um.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, beyond what we did here, in the city council, have been more hurdles or?
No, it's just that that has been. Yeah.
Other than double barrel.
Yeah, we've had uh, two other ones applied.
I keep telling Mr. Taco. His English is awful to get a permit for.
I don't need to talk to anybody, you just need to fill out paperwork.
I know.
But your your discussion around a a community event that would occur on a predictable basis.
Yeah.
There's discussions already about that particular thing in in that venue over there.
Yeah, and this, if it doesn't come through, I think, like, we can't call that, we've got all these. Cause that's easy, it's all.
If it's done privately, then there's no expense to the city. That would be ideal.
Cause we were gonna do it at October, October fest last year, but we couldn't figure out the food trucks. I remember. Maybe, maybe October fest this year, we'll. Figure it out, maybe.
That'd be fun.
I think she was a little bit scared by the commercial kitchen estimates reported into the old ACF. So that's what she's working on. She gotta get her dad to cough up some more money.
Well, I still haven't figured out in code how you do an outdoor venue or a booth type venue, um. You know, what what type of land use? That's gonna fall into. Um. You know, if that's something that we need to define at some point, um.
Maybe, maybe not. I also think it's an ancillary use that's allowed in the business district now.
Yeah, I haven't, I I've been looking at it, but um. I haven't had a lot of discussion about it, so maybe that's for another day.
Yeah, but I I think you could easily say it's an ancillary use if she does something in the main building.
Yeah.
And then anything outside.
It would be accessory to.
Accessory or utilities, whatever it is, that's supposed to be over the main building. And that's, I know that's her long-term goal, is to have a winter space indoor. Where people can come, not only in the bad weather, you know, a lot of it is inside as well, so hopefully people. Cause her sister is in the. The partnership. The two sons, the one and the partnership all the time. All right, we di- we digress, but more to come on blue zones. Thank you for that research. I found it interesting about, really interesting that. Summit Pacific partnered for the assessment, which is. If you read, read the city of Spokane's history with Blue Zone, if you wanna have. Because almost exactly half of eighty. A hot metal partner for the assessment and then. Spokane tore about a million dollars into it, and then when they cut to the three to four million dollar range, they had to back out. And they couldn't pay for it anymore. That's the issue.
We spending money on exactly.
Um, paying consultants to come in to help you do menu cards, to take measurements, to do surveys, all that sort of stuff.
Administrative costs.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there's not a thing, that's all just administrative management, but it's a for-profit by the guy that wrote it. Great for brilliant ideas, it's just he's found a way to make money on it, which is fine, can't get out of hand, can't.
Let's get out of hand.
Yeah, and and they do, it is designed. All righty, um. Any other? Planning commissioner report? Anything going on? All right, next meeting is April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three. And I said it was Commissioner Barr as secretary. At the next meeting. And do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, our favor.